Good evening and welcome to the March 22, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. I would like to call the meeting to order. And the roll call is it looks like every commissioner is present, so please record that, Ms. Humm. And number two, approval of the March 22, 2023 Planning and Zoning Agenda. Would anybody like to move approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, all approved. Number three, approval of the minutes of the February 22, 2023 Planning and Zoning Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Number four, any public comments? Seeing no one in the audience, I will go back to number five. I'll go up to number five. Continue discussion of the critical area regulations. Mr. Chukubiac.
Okay, thank you. I know getting through the remaining parts of the ordinance might take a couple hours, but we're getting close. We made progress at the last meeting. And there are sections of the current draft that I specifically want to ask if you want to, I want to ask questions like, do you want to keep this section in here the way it's drafted? Or in Chesapeake Beach, we do things differently. So I would suggest this. What do you think about it? And I wanted to start off by making a differentiation between what the zoning map says and what the critical area map says, because it's kind of foundational to how this set of standards applies. First, zoning map, and I believe you have copies of the zoning map, the one that you recommended in the council adopted. Yeah, good. That establishes all the various zoning districts in the entire town. What we're talking about tonight is the critical area, and it is an overlay on top of that. It doesn't change any of the requirements there except to make it more difficult or to place more restrictions on development activities. It doesn't loosen up or reduce restrictions, and it doesn't allow something that is otherwise prohibited by that. So if something's not allowed in RC District on the zoning map, it's not allowed in any part of the critical area. That's, and we're gonna, so, okay, so there's the distinction. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have an RC zone, a resource conservation zone, and that is different than the RCA District, or RCA Zone in the critical area. Critical area has three zones, the IDA, LDA, and RCA. The RCA is distinct from our RC District. And you might have read through here that, oh, wow, you can do a density of one unit per 20 acres in the RCA. And that's the critical area. The critical area law says, the town's critical area law and statewide, you subdivide the critical in the RCA, you could do one unit per 10, 20 acres. But in our RC District, you can't do housing at all. Okay? If there's a house that exists there, it can stay, but you can't do new housing. So from time to time, I'm going to mention, suggest the insertion of a phrase or something that kind of references what the underlying zone says, so that the average person who might read this document doesn't think, oh, I'm free to do this. I'm in the critical area. That means I can subdivide and build houses. Well, no, you can't do that. Okay? And also, you have a critical area map, a small version of it that is inserted in your binder. I have the large version here. If tonight we have to look at any property, or you're concerned about where various districts are, we can look at it at a larger scale. But I want to ask you to turn your attention to that map, if you have it, this small version. And I just want to mention that there are three colors on the map. Red is IDA, yellow is LDA, and green is RCA. The large panhandle of the town, that resource conservation area that is south of the town, on the opposite, the east side of Maryland 261, opposite Chesapeake Village, is, has both the RCA and the LDA zone. Okay? You see, there's a triangular shape wedge. It goes all the way down, and it just happens to touch the LDA, which is just outside the town.
Are you referring to this?
Yeah, perfect. That's it. And that is in a, in a, in a part of the town that is very environmentally sensitive, and is protected by Habitat Protection Standards from the state. But it's relevant to point out that because that's yellow, that land is developable, except that your zoning ordinance places the most restrictive zoning category on it, which is RC. So even though this is yellow, it still can't be developed except for, except for under the terms of the zoning ordinance, which is fairly restrictive. You could put a science research center there, or a, I guess, a hunting lodge, or something like that. Okay? That's about all, you know, the zoning ordinance allows us to do. So when we talk about LDA, and remember that while that is LDA, the zoning, the base zoning, the underlying zoning is actually more restrictive. If someone were to do something like build a, something that's allowed in the RCA, like a lodge, a hunting lodge, or something, they would fall under, that their development program would fall under the LDA standards, meaning they could build something, but they'd have to do it under the standards of the LDA, meaning they have to preserve all the, most of the woodland. They can only disturb about 15% of the property. And there'd be all other types of complicated requirements that you have to adhere to related to impervious surface coverage and the like, and mitigation. But anyway, so I just wanted to orient you to that particular map. Later, we're going to talk about growth allocation. I don't know if we get to that tonight. So I'll return to this map to talk about growth allocations that have been approved by the town over time, and how much the town has left. But I won't even introduce that topic yet, because it's a little complicated.
Okay.
So I'd like to turn everyone's attention to the draft itself. And I, and like we did last time, I like to go through and-
Chairman, may I ask a couple of questions?
Would you want to entertain questions right now?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Go ahead, Chairman Brown. Commissioner Brown, I'm still back at the chairman.
Um, I try and do my homework and get prepared for the meetings. And so I was looking back at the town's documents to try and determine what we are amending or changing. Is it the 1992 Flood Plane Management Ordinance? Or what?
We're amending the zoning ordinance.
Well, it, I, what, what section of the zoning ordinance?
Ultimately, it's going to be multiple sections of it.
Ultimately, but I'm talking about what, what exists now that we are changing. I wanted to kind of look at the new versus the old.
Okay. Sharon and I were just talking about this. I have a version of the zoning ordinance that's not, reflects the codification that the town did a couple of years ago. So I don't have the right numbers. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
I went to our, to our website, and you go on the planning and zoning section, and I looked under ordinances, and it has three things there: town zoning, land subdivision, and flood plane management, which is this 1992 thing, which flood plane management sounds a lot like critical area to me back in 1990. So you say it's something different. That's good. I'd just like to see it and compare it.
Yeah.
Has the county adopted critical area management?
Yes.
Because I didn't see it.
Yes.
It says there, they reference 1984 in, on their webpage. I don't know.
Yeah. So the county adopted the critical area program about the same time as the town, which was in the mid 1980s. So if it was 1984, it's generally-
Okay, but have they adopted the model of critical area ordinance?
I don't know. Actually, I don't know.
Yeah, I couldn't find that either. And after spending most of the afternoon reading the 75 pages, I thought, well, and, and looking through the state law, I couldn't find this model code anywhere. So I said, well, maybe if I go to the Critical Area Commission, I'd find it. What I found there was a model code, but it's version 2022, and what we're working on is 2018. Why, why aren't we using the most current version?
Well, geez. Actually, I didn't know that they came up with a new version. This is the version they gave me last year, in 2022, or 2021, I guess, when we first began this process. But I've been in coordination with them even as of today, before tonight's meeting. The issue never came up that there was another version, which means that if I go back-
It's more or less the same. There, but just comparing the, the table of contents, there are a number of changes. It's only 49 pages long, as opposed to 75. So, you know, I just wonder why, why are we looking at, which, which version are we going to look on?
Well, we will adopt the latest version, but I will look at the 22, 2022 version, talk with the staff, the Critical Area Commission, see what changes there are, so that we're working with the latest version. So in other words, we don't want to adopt something that is outdated.
I mean, I didn't go beyond the table of contents, looking at it, to see the meat of it, if what has changed.
Right.
I covered that about an hour ago. I don't understand. What have I done all day? I've looked at them all.
I suspect that there are very little changes, but almost every couple of years, Critical Area Commission manages to revise some of its regulations, and it can revise regulations without law being adopted by the General Assembly. So when they adopt those regulations, they publish them in this version. So in the next round of updates, everyone has it. So, yeah, I'll find out. Report back to the commission. By the way, the, what we're amending principally is in Section 29017 of the zoning ordinance. It's, that's an Article IV of the zoning ordinance, and it's the overlay and floating districts. And 29, or 29017 is the critical area overlay district. Now, there are a number of other sections of the zoning ordinance that reference the critical area, and they will be updated as well. So the, the ultimate zoning text amendment that, you know, you would pass on to the council will largely affect 29017, but it'll also cite other sections that need to be updated, or revised, or eliminated. But Chairwoman and I were just talking about this this evening. After we get kind of reviewing through these principled issues, the next meeting, or whenever we're ready, we will come with the full kind of suite of ordinance updates. So it shows what's being amended, what's being deleted, and what's being added.
I, I have a question. So you mentioned that the 2022 version was 30-some pages, and this is-
Forty-nine is what the table of contents have.
So, and this one's about 70-some?
75.
75? So-
That's including all the definitions and other things, and I don't know whether you can include those in all. Oh, I just don't know. I don't think the 2022 version has definitions in the back. I didn't compare it page by page.
My only concern is we're going to spend time on the 2018 version, when it could already be taken out of the 2022 version. So is that something we really want to, what's the best way to handle this?
Best way is to get through this document. There, there are likely several changes that might have been updated into the 2022 version. But the stuff we're talking about tonight, definitely is not. I've actually been in coordination with the critical area staff. No one said, that's old stuff. So we're fine going forward. And I'll report back to the commission at the next meeting, or before the next meeting, though, what differences there may be between the two documents. But I think Larry's point is that that version probably doesn't have all the definitions or the supplemental tables in the back, and those take up at least 20 pages of this document.
I'm just concerned we're going to be spending our time changing something that's already been changed or deleted. That's my only concern.
It's a pretty substantial difference, 75 to 49.
Well, just, just looking at the, the 2018 version, it basically ends on page 50. The table of contents that I brought for the 2022 version says the last chapter begins at page 49. So they're probably close in weight.
Well, Chris, if you, you don't think what we're going to discuss tonight has been eliminated, then we're probably safe with that.
I also, when I'm reviewing this, when I see a reference to the state statute or KUMAR, I look at the KUMAR regulations. That's not being changed. It's, I just want to give you the assurance, I think we're making practical use of our time. Yeah? Oh, I'll get closer to it. Is that, is that better? Okay, yeah. Okay, so last time, we ended with the discussion of the non-water-dependent structures on piers. And so I proposed that we start at the bottom of page nine, and the subtitle there is B, Intensely Developed Areas. Item 1 under B raised some question for me. The following uses may be permitted in the IDA. Okay? And the first use, which is listed on page 10, is non-maritime heavy industry. Remember, these regulations are written for the entire state of Maryland, and there are areas where there are industrial maritime activities. We don't have heavy industry in the town, nor do we have a zoning ordinance that would ever allow it. Simply, we don't have that as permitted use. So I put a line through item A, thinking simply not something that is relevant for Chesapeake Beach. So I think it could be eliminated, and my proposal would be that, you know, once we finish this, when we send it to the Critical Area Commission for their review, they will offer an opinion about whether we're allowed to remove that or not. But anyway, item B, though, is relevant. Sludge is dredge, and it's what the town does with dredging and managing the sludge that is stored just west of Kellum's Field. And so I think it's relevant to keep that one in. By the way, this is not a coherent list, expansive list of the uses that are allowed in IDA. These are just two things that they want to flag as saying, well, they're, they're allowed if they meet certain conditions.
Okay, so-
Yes, sir.
So this says, except in the 100-foot buffer. Our wastewater treatment plant, I think, is within 100 feet of the marsh over there, which I think qualifies as critical upper area.
Right.
So therefore, we'd have to get rid of it.
No, we wouldn't have to. And it, it exists-
And build a new one there.
Yeah, we still could. A municipality or a county can go through a different process for approving central public facilities. And it's requires a kind of a documentation, documentation that the use as being proposed conforms to the critical area regulations in the town's, you know, central governance function. So this is not meant to say you can't do a wastewater treatment plant.
Reading the words.
Yeah.
Do we need to have other wording in there to allow us to have a wastewater or sewage treatment plant in that area? Or how do we need to improve that wording?
Well, this doesn't, I don't think, I don't think you knew. I think what is there exists as a non-conforming permitted use in the critical area, and the wastewater treatment plants are permitted routinely within the critical area regulations. The plant was expanded within the wastewater treatment plant, or within the critical area. So-
So you think the wording is appropriate and should stand?
Yes, I think it is appropriate.
Okay.
Then there are a couple of other kind of standards. Development activities should be designed to minimize destruction of forest and woodland vegetation. And number three is perhaps the most important item. It's one that, as a matter we engage with here at the town over time, and that's the standard that all development activities shall include stormwater management technologies that reduce pollutant loadings by at least 10% below the level of pollution on the site prior to development. The implication is that any new development actually results in a net reduction over pre-existing conditions in terms of pollution. It actually should improve things in the critical area. But that requires that developers submit complicated stormwater management plans and calculations, and those are all documented. Or the way that you do those are documented in this report that's cited there, Critical Area 10% Rule Guidance Manual. And so it's worth kind of pointing out that if the planning commission ever gets a site plan in the critical area, you'll see reference to that document.
So what, what do you mean by redevelopment? Does that mean that one of the, I mean, we've got clusters of homes down here that occupy a fairly large percentage of their property, and redevelopment means they can't do a major remodel of their home?
No, not at all. They, they definitely can't.
Well, I'm just reading the definition here on page 59, which says redevelopment means the process of developing land which is or has been developed.
Right.
For purpose of implementing specific provisions of this chapter, redevelopment as opposed to new development means a development activity that takes place on property with pre-development imperviousness or lot coverage of 15% or greater. Most, most of those homes are 50 to 60, 70% of their lot. So by that definition, you can't do it.
No, no, no. It's just saying that redevelopment is the activity of developing lots that have that characteristic, meaning at least 15% of it is developed already. In other words, if only 10% of the lot was covered with a building, you'd have to fall, you'd fall under the stricter requirements for development. As a redevelopment opportunity, you're, you're, there is some leeway, there was some reduction in the requirements.
I have a question about A, you mentioned.
Yes.
So is there a definition for non-maritime heavy industry, like a specific definition? Because my thought process is, it's, why wouldn't we just leave it in? It's more protective. And since we don't know what it is, why wouldn't we just keep it?
Well, what it is, is industrial activity that is not related to a waterfront location, doesn't have to be there. And by heavy means it's industrial uses or activities that have impacts that extend beyond the borders of the lot or the property where it's located. So it's typically activities that produce fumes, or noise, or odor, or something like that.
Right. I, I just don't see the point of taking it out. It's, it's one line, harmless, it's more protective. We don't have very good regulations in most of our critical areas anyways, so I would just, so that it would have to fall under number one, which gives some stipulations.
Oh, I was to say, like, if, if somehow the zoning ordinance were amended to allow heavy industry, then it would have to meet these stricter requirements.
Right.
That's a fair point.
Do we want to reconsider that and take out the removal then, and just leave it?
I don't think we motioned to remove it, so it should-
Chukubiac, what do you, we-
Yeah.
Okay, then we will retain. Okay, that'll be retained. Let's go back to Commissioner Brown's number three. Is there a way to clarify that? It's, it kind of reads like mud when you're a layperson. So I'm kind of understanding the confusion here. Commissioner Brown, do you have any ideas as to how it would be written more clearly? Or are you okay with the way it's written currently?
I'm not okay, and I, I really don't have a suggestion. But what concerns me, I think, also, is that redevelopment, the term is used in a number of places here, and lots of restrictions are put on the residents in the older sections of town, and I'm one of them. So I'm trying to evaluate in my mind what, what these, how they would impact those homes. I haven't got a good picture of that. Maybe you can tell us how it would impact.
Yeah. Most of the homes in town in the critical area are in the IDA, or the red zone on the map. And I think the most significant requirement is item three here, that an applicant do a stormwater management study. So if someone were on a, on a small lot in the IDA, removing a smaller house and building a bigger house, and assume that smaller house covers more than 15% of its lot, which is reasonable.
As I read it, this is, if you're significantly replacing a house on the same footprint as it has before, not enlarging it, but you're just, you're taking down the walls, maybe they're termite eaten, I don't know. But you're doing a major renovation, but you're on the same footprint. You have to comply with this, and the destruction of forest and woodlands isn't the big deal to me. It's now that, now the person has to include stormwater management technologies and reduce pollutant loadings, and they've got to hire extra people to figure all of this out and understand language in it, like the chairman says.
There's no doubt that the critical area regulations impose burdens on property owners in the critical area. And there's nothing the town can do to change that. We can help explain it and administer the code in a fair way. But this is the state's requirements in the critical area.
That's why I was looking up the law to try and figure out what the state's requirements were, because the model code is coming from the Critical Area Commission- Because the model code is coming from the critical area commission. And I, I wanted to see if that was from the state telling us to do that. Didn't find that.
I'm going back to your definition real quick on redevelopment.
Fifteen.
On page 59.
Right.
Almost like they defined it with the, with the same language.
And we've talked a lot about small town charm here. And to me, the small town charm is this, these clusters of little homes all over the older neighborhoods. Restrictions in here that we get to later, about percent of the property and, and all of this that make it difficult or impossible to, to renovate the older homes just sends alarm bells up to me.
In practice, though, the town has a continual, is in a continual process of property regeneration, expansion, even on your street, houses have filled in those spaces with bigger houses over time.
Different rules that wouldn't be allowed now.
Well, some of those, the critical area regs have been in place since 1985 here in town.
And I'm not arguing for those homes either. I'm not particularly fond of them, but that's, there's a different set of rules. We've got new zoning code that we've, we've applied here, the 35 foot height limit, no parking on the first level. Those houses have garages. I mean, different kettle of fish. We're, we're imposing stricter, more difficult standards for homeowners to comply with. And I'm just concerned.
Okay. These critical area regulations, though, are not imposing additional standards. They were in place now. It is true that some of the standards that the council has just adopted are to impose additional, you know, dimensional requirements and the like. But these standards are not, there are, with respect to the buffer yards and some other matters, yes. But the things that would impact the, the average applicant that would come for an addition or to replace their house and build it, those standards have been in place since the eighties. And they're not, this doesn't change it. So that 10% rule compliance, we administer that routinely.
Those, those rules have changed, you know, a lot since the eighties. I mean, in the, in the eighties, you could, one person on my street was allowed to almost tear down the complete house and leave one wall up. And that was a remodel. You couldn't do that today, could you?
No.
No. And so the rules have changed a lot. That's.
Okay. So the rules generally have changed.
And if, if you're, are you saying that the zoning code is more restrictive in all cases than these critical area rules?
No, they're, they're different.
Because so in some cases, the critical area rules are more restrictive. In some cases, the zoning code is more restrictive depending on the subject. And so we have to, I think, think closely about the impact and how this affects the people living here, you know?
Well, let me give you an example of how in practice these standards are applied because we do it routinely in town. And you can drive through the village two zone here and see the number of houses that have been built over the past, say, four years, five years, and kind of large houses too. They all went through this process. Essentially, if it's a, a, a new house on the lot, the applicant has to have an engineer do a stormwater management study. Some applicants were savvy enough to go through the spreadsheets and complete the data themselves. It's, it basically uses impervious surface area and slope and underlying soil conditions as a means for deriving how much phosphorus will flow off the property when it rains. And, and they want to make sure, the law here wants to make sure that that number is at least 10% lower than what happens now. So there's a kind of an evaluation. It's really technical that has to be done. So that's an expense for the average builder that's building a house. It's an expense that someone has to pay an engineer for. Typically, the engineer that does the spreadsheet calculation is the engineer that's doing the site plan and, or the architect that's doing the plan. So it's another professional service that that professional does for the client. Once it's determined that the, that the, once they've determined what the impacts are in terms of phosphorus and it's even nitrogen. Nitrogen's not really calculated. It's this kind of, phosphorus is typically a proxy for nitrogen. But once we understand what the nutrients are coming off the property, the applicant has a means for reducing that. And they propose how it is that they're going to reduce that. So it stays under 10%. And ways, some ways they do it are to put rain barrels in the corner of each of the structure so that the roof discharge goes right into the rain barrel rather than flowing off the driveway and carrying pollutants into the street and then to the bay. Or they build a rain garden and they plant it with certain species that are really nitrogen-loving species and they take up those nutrients. Or they install French drains to hold back water and then allow it to go back in gradual or way. Or if you've seen the property out here off of two, we were talking about it at the last meeting off of 260, it's up on the corner. If you head out of town, it's on the right-hand side just before you get like towards.
F Street.
Yeah, F Street. They actually installed a cistern in the ground to hold the water, all the water goes into that cistern and it's treated. It's, it's filtered and treated and then discharged slowly. No one even knows perceptibly into the ground, percolates in the ground or gradually flows down through the street. But it's clean. So those are the things that sort of major developments have to do. Like when I say major, I mean new houses. But the average application that we get is a new patio in the critical area or in addition to the house or a shed or a garage. Generally, we don't make those applicants go through this complicated process of doing this technical spreadsheet. And we follow the guidance of the state. And the state says for these little mom and pop type of applications, just require that they plant native Chesapeake Beach area species on the lot, trees and shrubs that are native to the area that take up water and take up nutrients and will grow and thrive in the area. So for every 100 square feet of new impervious, so it's a patio 200 square feet, we require a tree. So every 100 square feet, one tree. You have a 200 square foot patio out back in the critical area, you have to plant at least two trees or three shrubs for every 100. So most people are saying, hey, I planned to, you know, decorate my patio or edge my patio with some shrubs anyway. So perfect, just show that on your plan. And so that's how it is administered in a very practical way. Now, the major developments like the rotten reel or something that Abner would do or any commercial development along here, they have to do that 10% study, but it's even more complicated. That what's involved is far more complicated than what the single-family house project has to do. But still, they have to go through that study that, and the deliverable is a series of what we call best management practices that have to be installed and maintained property for stormwater. But I want to assure you that the small projects do cause a burden on the homeowner, but the burden is generally relatively light and the most applicants, almost universally, have no concern at all. They say, well, yeah, I'm, when you actually talk with them, they say, well, I think it's a good idea. That makes sense. I'll plant a tree. And they're satisfied and we move on. They get their permit and the town has more trees planted in the critical area. So as a practical matter, that's, that's how it works.
On the case of the rotten reel, did, did the critical area analysis come before the commission?
Yeah, it was part of the package, but it wasn't evaluated in any technical way. But one of the most important parts of that whole.
I, I don't recall it ever coming up in, before this commission while I've been here.
Were you on the commission when that was approved? The latest redevelopment? Seven year, four year, five years ago, I guess.
Five years.
Yeah, so I can't recall. But a big topic of that planning commission's discussion was the huge stormwater management facility they installed in the middle of Mirs Road, which is, I don't know if you realize that, but under Mirs Road, there's this giant stormwater filtration system that takes all the water from all the way up beyond Chesapeake Station Shopping Center. And as you go up in the hill and all kind of that area, that sub-drainage area drains there and treats all that water and then discharges it as clean water into the bay. Previously, all that water just went right out through a big storm drain right out into the Chesapeake Bay. So it's a, it was a ma- major and measurable improvement to this town's water quality. And that was the mitigation that, that they did. Because if you can't meet mitigation in a variety of other ways, you can do it through offsets. And this is, was like an offset project. But they did other things too. They required it to plant things along the edge and tree planting and other things. But that stormwater filtration system was the thing that was, was the dominant of best management principles.
Anything else? Okay. Anything else from any of the commissioners on this item number three? We will, unless we have any other way to write that, I guess we have to just keep it as is then.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Chris, you said that we have to be at least 10% below the current level. Is that right?
Yes.
Where, do you know where that standard came from? Is that an EPA? Is it an environmental standard? Where, where is that? What standard are they using?
That standard, that 10% standard was adopted by the state of Maryland in the critical area law. And what, what it means in practice depends on any given site. So you, the first step is to study what the current pollutant loadings are coming off the property. And once you have that, then you've got to reduce it by at least 10%.
So, and if I read this correctly, that it says fall 2003, that's when, that's what the standard we're using was done in 2003, 20 years ago?
Not the standard, but that's the guidance document. That's, it kind of makes it simple for the layperson to understand how to do it. So the, the average person can pick up that document and say, oh, I see. All I have to do is plant trees or do a French drain or, and it provides the more technical specifications for an engineer or architect to do as well. So it's all set forth in that document, which was published in 2003.
Okay. Do we know if there's been anything subsequent to that?
It says right after it, as may be subsequently amended. So it probably has been amended.
I haven't seen any amendments to, to the version. I, I have the version. I've referred to it frequently and I haven't noticed it changed. I routinely have to go to Critical Area Commission to download it again. And it seems like it's the same old document.
So that, that's not unusual that we're using a 20-year-old standard?
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
We moved to number four. Do you want to make any changes on number four? Just leave it?
No, no, I would, I really, and kind of under the same theory that Commissioner Blackwelder expressed.
Are there modified buffer areas in Chesapeake Beach?
Yes.
And are, do they show up on our map?
They show up on the map, but they don't show up on that kind of version that you have in that document. And I, I reserve, I intend to talk about the modified buffer area at some length. But in the, in a nutshell, it's the 100-foot space between the edge of the water, essentially 100-foot inland, that lines the bay and fishing creek in the IDA. So where the red matches, touches the water on that map, that's your modified buffer area. In other words, it's the buffer, the natural buffer that has been developed and modified by human activity over time. So it no longer functions as a buffer in any environmental sense.
I thought the buffer was 100, 100 feet from the water's edge. This says modified buffer. So and buffer is pretty easy, you know, get a measuring tape out and measure it off. But the modified buffer, it says in an area officially mapped and approved by the Critical Area Commission. And so I guess we have some.
Yeah.
I guess you don't know where they are.
Yeah. And it's, it's 100 feet. Still the 100 feet, even though it's modified. What's modified is the, the land within that 100 feet. It no, it's no longer our natural shoreline or a forest on the bay. It's been modified, but it's still that 100-foot distance. And there, I'll show you the map. It doesn't appear, as I said, on that version that you have there, but on the town's official version, it has been mapped.
Just looking at the definitions on page 57. The last line says, where development in accordance with specific MBA provisions can be permitted in the buffer without a variance. So that's saying that you're within those areas within 100 feet. But there are other, within that area, there are areas that don't require a variance. So there are.
Yeah, well, that, that buffer, the modified buffer area allows the.
Right. Not a variance.
You're allowed to develop, but you're not allowed to develop in a natural water, in shoreline or school.
But we know what, we know what those are. They've been approved by the state Critical Area Commission. So they must be fixed in some way.
Do you have approval to be on this side?
Is that in our, is that the last map? Is that the last map we have in here? Is that?
Yeah.
It's in the, if you have your code, if you have your code, it's in the code back of the zoning. Anybody brought their zoning ordinance back?
What?
But it's even very hard to. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You've done it.
But Chris.
These are areas within the 100 feet. The modified buffer area. And I, I don't see where, where you're saying they exist, where they're different from the buffer area.
Yep. That's the modified buffer along. Get down to the Panhandle.
I'll find anybody. If you look in your, this little, it's little black stuff. Right? You can see the little black. Not easy to. You want to show those? I don't know. Oh, you have it. Oh, you have it?
It's basically everything.
I think Jay got it down there. Right. Got it.
But I don't see that in the definition.
Chris, you, you said you made a statement that said, you can't develop in the buffer. And then I, I lost the rest of that.
Without a variance.
Okay.
In other words, the buffer is the most environmentally sensitive part of the whole critical area. And when I say buffer, I mean part of the critical area that is still natural, preserved, it's shoreline, or it's like the area you head south along that Panhandle, if you go down to the beach, past that sign, and you go out there and you look to the south, that's all buffer.
The natural shoreline right there?
Yeah, that's all critical area buffer. No development is permitted in that first 100 feet.
And that 100 feet begins where the water meets the shore?
Yes. It's a little more tactical like that. It talks about the mean high tide, but essentially, look at where the water meets the...
And what about where the riprap is? Does it also begin where the riprap?
Well, it begins where mean high tide is measured, and I'm not quite sure where that is technically. But as a practical matter, there is no buffer that's mapped. It just exists. And when a development activity is proposed in what is obvious to everybody, it's anything that's not the modified buffer, an engineering study has to be done to establish that point of mean high tide, and then from there, wherever that is, wherever that is horizontally or vertically, from that point, 100 feet in. And it gets more complicated than that, because if it's a slope, the buffer gets expanded. That's why the buffer goes all the way up to B Street and tops out on some of those houses, because for every 1%, slope, you add four feet. So you really can expand that buffer as you get into environmentally challenged sites.
And that's measured off the mean tide, you said?
Mean high tide.
Mean high tide. Thank you.
Okay. Covering a lot of ground on this. This is good. Thank you for your interest in this. I know this to the extent that you are. I appreciate it. But it's very complicated stuff, believe me. And the wording of this ordinance leaves a lot to be desired. But it would be a Herculean task to go through what the state has given us to make it sound better. So the last thing that I would add to this section would be a number five. And I just want to kind of get this into the Critical Area Regulations and repeat it a number of times where it's necessary. Again, number five, this talks about the IDA. I would say, no use shall be permitted in the IDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. Now, that's understood implicitly, but it's so well ingrained in the kind of the approach to critical area law that the state doesn't even feel it's necessary to put it in their code. But the average person that reads this, though, may see that and say, oh, okay, so it's not giving me the right to do something. It's saying the town zoning controls. I can't put something in the IDA that's not allowed in any of the underlying zones. So for instance, a lot of the IDA is residential village. The only thing you can do in residential village is a house or, you know, an institution, uses like that. Even though this ordinance talks about other types of uses that could conceivably be allowed under certain circumstances, they can only be allowed if the underlying zoning allows them. So even though the Critical Area Commission makes room for the possibility that you could have, you know, non-maritime heavy industry, it would never be allowed in Chesapeake Beach as long as it's not allowed in any of the zoning districts. So that's why I think it's a useful statement. Even though it doesn't change anything in a substantive way, it just helps clarify, I think.
Any questions about the number five? Any commissioners? No? Okay. C.
C describes limited developed areas, and those are the areas that show up as yellow on the map. The largest area of limited development is on Old Bayside Road and the lettered streets like I, J, H, I, J. If you head down Old Bayside Road, you can see that. That's all LDA, and you can tell that even though that was subdivided and developed, it is largely still wooded. And we have, from time to time, encounter applicants there that want to do more with their land. And we have to say, well, the critical area law limits how much disturbance you can have. And it requires that you preserve the forest that's still on the site. And the various complicated calculations for that are all listed on page 11 there. They're all the same as have been in the code since 1985 when the town adopted it. And basically, you're capped at 15%. You can use your property, but you can't develop more of it than 15%. And that's locked in place. You can't remove trees. We just had someone this past week clear forest on his lot in the LDA zone. Now he's in code enforcement, because you can't clear forest area in the LDA. You can under certain limited circumstances, but you certainly can't do it without a permit and without a review. So when you wholesale remove eight major trees in the LDA, you're under code enforcement. That's a kind of real practical way that the people come into contact with the critical area regulations. It doesn't happen very much in the LDA, but it does happen from time to time.
Chris, if I can look at your map here and ask a question. The critical area, I presume, well, it includes yellow, green, and brown, right?
Red, yellow, green, and red? Does your show up as brown on that version?
Brown, red? Okay. But there's, for instance, up on Route 260, it looks like it's more than 1,000 feet from the water. And it's a little island of red and a little island of yellow. Why is that there? And then you've got that line that circles that has the gray in it. All this that is presumably within the circles, but it isn't either. So...
Good question. The reason why the red and the yellow looks like they're islands up there is in part because the critical area is measured not just from the bay, but from any tidal water.
Right.
And there's a tidal water that goes up there. I think it's, maybe it's Muffat Lake back there, and it's from that, the edge of that, then it's 1,000 feet up the hill up to 260. So that's how those areas get lumped into the critical area. And why do they look like they're kind of an island? It's because that large subdivision called Bayview Hills is not subject to the critical area regulations, even though it's technically within the critical area, and the critical area staff will tell you that's in the critical area, but it's exempt. It was exempted by the critical area and the Critical Area Commission, while it wasn't routine, did this in some jurisdictions in Maryland, feeling it was politically necessary in order to get the critical area laws adopted in the state. So that land was exempted, meaning it was developed without regard for the critical area laws. And still to this day, while the general, you know, person throughout the critical area will have to meet the critical area requirements, anybody in those, in that neighborhood doesn't have to. Like these 10% rule planting requirements, patios, additions.
And the same goes for this little gray spot on the coast?
I don't see that one.
It's up by the top.
No, that's the water. That's open water.
That's next to Horizon.
Yeah, that's that little pond next to Horizons behind the Seagate.
Marsh next to Horizons and Seagate.
But it's gray.
Yeah, I see it. It does show up gray on this map, too. Yeah. But everything outside of the town is gray on that map, too. It's kind of like the color of the base map on that version of it. Here on the map that's published online, that Cindy has and I have just now, it just shows up as dark. It looks, it must be water or wetlands or something.
Chris, could you talk a little bit about 1C and how it applies to Randall Cliffs?
Wildlife corridor? Is that what you mean, 1C?
Yes. Yes.
It says, first one says, if a wildlife corridor system is identified by Department of Natural Resources, the corridor shall be preserved by a public or private group.
Right. So I guess the question is, so Randall Cliffs has the tiger beetle and it has some plant. And I remember when we were comprehensive planning, somebody had asked for some additional information on those two things. Is that considered a wildlife corridor or not?
So that determination would be made if someone submitted a development activity, a regulated activity, then a determination of that would be made. But that is considered a natural heritage area because of these endangered species. So there's a whole layer of review that's probably more stringent than that corridor. But conceivably, there are probably pathways for animals to move through that, whether they're beetles or not. If it's established through the environmental work for development, then that corridor would have to be preserved. Biologists will have to say, well, this area requires at least 30 feet of preserved forest, and you're going to have to shift your development envelope away from this area to preserve it. That's in practice how it would happen. It's very rare, in my view or my experience, but that's probably how it would happen for something like that.
Okay. And then for the forest interior bird habitat, it's...
Yes.
That is a corridor for birds, or is it not?
No, it's something different. It's a FIDS habitat. It's not so much corridor, but it's a forest that has evidence of these birds being in it, and it's a deep enough forest that's protected on all sides. So it's not so much corridor, it's just that FIDS habitat.
Okay. So FIDS habitats are not necessarily wildlife corridors?
Right. And you could conceivably find a wildlife habitat within a FIDS. But again, you would only document a wildlife corridor when you're reviewing, proposing something for development.
Oh, okay. So say there's a development proposed. Maybe it's not on the FIDS. Say it's just proposed somewhere else. How would that corridor end up getting identified?
If it's RCA or LDA, a project is submitted, that project gets sent to the Department of Natural Resources to make a determination of that. And then their findings get submitted back to the town. And if they find that there is a wildlife corridor or some other habitat, they make it known, and then it triggers the regulations to protect it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I was curious.
Yeah.
Well, they haven't designated these corridors. You have to make a plan, submit it to them, then they'll decide whether it's a corridor or not.
They go out and do field work, document those. They do have a lot of mapping of a variety of kind of high priority, kind of areas of concern, and they map these things. So you can find on maps where these areas of concern would be. But they are just meant to sort of target the attention. So DNR would see that map and say, well, we got to go out to do an inspection of this development to make sure that if there is a corridor, you know, it's likely to be in this area, we're going to map it and tell the town to stay out of it.
So is there a state map of corridors that have been identified? Or, I mean, you know...
Not at the scale, not at this regulatory scale. But in the big picture, there are a lot of state maps that deal with wildlife habitat, areas of special concern, not to mention the wetlands or the natural heritage areas. Those are all mapped. And the Department of Natural Resources has a pretty good mapping, suite of mapping tools that show those.
But being in the critical area, we might want to consult those maps as part of our research prior to a development proposal?
You certainly can. Sure. Of course, the areas in town, like this Panhandle, you could presume that that's already established by DNR as an area worthy of conservation, preservation. In fact, they've communicated that to the town for, it seems like once every decade. You've got to get that message. And of course, the marshlands that are also green are de facto wildlife habitat areas. And of course, there are often limits to the development. Where it would be interesting is if someone wanted to develop in the LDA, the yellow area, either any of the yellow areas, and they, maybe the outside of the Panhandle, for instance, redevelop Old Bayside Road corridor conceivably, just sort of think about potential for that. That would trigger a specific review that determined where these resources are, because nothing's going to show up on the map, I'm almost certain it says that's a natural habitat area, except for when you get closer to the edge of the water. Obviously, there it is. But up closer to, you know, where the school is and as you head west, you're not going to see anything on the map that targets that area for conservation. But once they look at that forest that was preserved with the initial subdivision, they may say, oh, there's a corridor here. This is where animals move from one part of town down to the water in the marsh and back. And they would map that in a very detailed way, then that would be a topic for conversation at a planning commission meeting.
So that little piece of land that touches the Fishing Creek Trail, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, as an example.
Anything more?
No, I'll leave Chris alone.
Okay.
Would it be okay if I just moved through the next couple pages? Because they're not areas that are changed or regulations that are changed, but it does speak to the alteration of forest and developed woodlands. And, you know, basically, you can't clear forests that is in an LDA. If you go to page 14, we start the discussion of resource conservation areas. But before we got there, I put a note to add a number nine, and it would be like the number five we previously discussed. So no use shall be permitted in the LDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district.
What page are you on?
14.
14.
14.
So number nine under five? Are you talking about, I'm sorry, number?
On page 14.
You're talking about number, under number eight, you're going to add number nine?
Yes, I'm suggesting.
Do we need to motion those in?
I think, do we want to just make one motion to approve all the changes? Or how do you want to make, how do you want to change this?
We found that through the comprehensive plan and all that, it really helps. We learn through practice that if you want to see something changed, say it so it can be in a minute, because then we go back to minutes and we have a coherent record. So rather than a broad...
Okay.
I mean, maybe not a motion, maybe just everybody agree, just by consensus. I think in last minutes, you put that a couple times, by consensus. So if it's just, if everybody's saying it's okay, then let's just do it.
We don't need an official motion for this. We're just going to have by consensus.
If it's okay, let's just add it.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do. So number nine, read that again as you want to...
No use shall be permitted in the LDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district.
Essentially the same statement you had before.
Yes. Yes.
On page thirteen, the third line from the top. Second, third word from the right hand side. What is a real extent? Is there? IPO or something?
Yeah, that should be aerial extent, the aerial extent, which is the. The perimeter of something.
Chris, can you repeat the language for number nine?
No use, no use shall be permitted in the LDA that is not permitted in the underlying zoning district.
So we're adding those two statements. Have any of your other districts added anything useful or helpful? That you recall that we might consider adding or should we think about adding things? That's a helpful statement, I think.
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Yeah.
Some of them, you mean, do you mean other communities in Maryland?
Yeah, so this is a model ordinance, but I guess technically we could add to it. I just was wondering if there's anything relevant to Chesapeake Beach that we hadn't done in the code. We might consider. I can't think of, you know, I'm not familiar enough with this to think of something like that, but I'm just wondering if you had a recommendation.
I think eventually we have to come up with new standards that are that deal with our unique coastal resiliency issues and floodplain issues. But I don't know what the answer to that is yet. I want to get this out of the way, but at some point we need to revisit that. But apart from that, I'm not really seeing anything. You're going to, but I do have a number of comments additions comparable to that number nine and related to that. The town's current critical area regulations differ from the old model. And they were revised, a number of the critical area regs were revised, I'd say two thousand and five, maybe something like that. And because the town had some trouble administering them and they negotiated changes to the law with the Critical Area Commission. And we're going to get to that point in the document tonight where I'm going to say, well. The model that you see here doesn't embrace what Chesapeake Beach adopted fifteen years ago. And I'm probably going to say something like, I think it's okay. I think I think maybe we shouldn't have adopted those changes we did fifteen years ago. And maybe we should take stick with the more stringent model requirements and.
Wanted to look them up so I know what.
Yeah.
What I'm changing.
Right.
Awesome.
Right. But now you know the section for next time and we might not even get to that part tonight. But I I'm not suggesting any real substantive changes. Or customization.
So I assume that everybody has consensus for the number nine addition that was proposed by Mr. Chukubiac. Do I hear any anything other than consensus on number nine? Okay, then I guess we have consensus for that.
As soon as I said my last statement, I realized I'm wrong. I am suggesting one thing. It's something when the critical when the planning commission. Did started this exercise, I don't know, six years ago or twelve years, I forget what it was. We came up with language that dealt with individual tree removal. Because we have this quirky law that says you have to have no net loss in trees in Chesapeake Beach. But it allows you to remove trees in the IDA. And the town previously used to enforce this. This sort of no tree cutting anywhere in the critical area. But as a practical matter, the law allows you to remove trees in the IDA. It's the LDA and the RCA where tree cutting is prohibited. And but we've have to, it's been the custom of the town to have. A review of proposals for individual tree cutting and to have applicants replace those trees. And believe me, this is something that has not been codified in law, but it was administered as if it were a law. Then when I came in, I noted that it wasn't the law. And I began, I did a survey. I talked to everybody for about two years who were were sort of encumbered by this. And they said. I think it's fair. I think you should administer it this way, even though it wasn't required. I'm perfectly happy to replace these trees with new trees. I wanted to, I mean, they're really important. It's just that this particular tree in my yard is a danger to me. I don't want it to fall or it's causing issues. And it was a really kind of friendly way for a town government to administer its its regulations. So in terms of a new substantive change, I want to sort of codify that process. And to make it clear that even in the IDA, if you remove a tree, you have to submit something to the town. You don't call it a report, a permit, but it gives the town a. It's like a registration. You're registering registering that tree removal. So we can document that there was a tree there and it's being replaced and we're adhering to the policy of the Critical Area Commission that there be no net loss. So I want to kind of codify that, but I brought that with me tonight. I don't think we're going to get to that. I'll leave it with you tonight. We can talk about it next time. Okay. Sorry for that detour, but I wanted to.
Okay.
Wrap up my discussion.
All right.
Okay, resource conservation areas. This is the most sensitive parts. It's the green parts on the map. Everyone who's attuned to discussion, the comprehensive rezoning we had in twenty twenty two probably saw this first paragraph and said, what? One unit per twenty acres. You can do one unit per twenty acres in the green parts of the map. Nothing in this section shall limit the ability of a participant in the. Skip that. Easement. Provided that no conveyance will result in a density greater than one dwelling unit per twenty acres. And then later, under density in number four, it says. Land within the RCA may be developed for residential uses at a density not to exceed one dwelling unit per twenty acres. Now, it so happens that all the green areas on the map are on the critical area map. Are zoned resource conservation under Chesapeake Beach's zoning ordinance. And there is no housing allowed in the resource conservation district. So I'd like to suggest that the at the end of item item one, after the word acres. You consider adding this, except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone. In other words. In other words, yes, the state would allow you to do one per twenty. Except that our zoning ordinance doesn't allow it. So except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone. And the same fragment of the sentence would be added to four A. Land within the RCA may be developed for residential uses at a density not to exceed one dwelling unit per twenty units. Except as may be further restricted by the underlying zone.
I'm with that.
And again, that's not necessary to administer the law, but it's I think it's necessary for the average person, citizen who's reading their documents. You could say, okay, I understand. I'm in the RCA zone. I'm not. My ability to develop palaces is not present. You're respective of what the state says generally with respect to RCAs.
I have a question. So if I understand correctly what you just said, that the that. It is RCA is the green part on the map. It's zone resource conservation, which does not allow that. Going back to the FIDS, what is, I don't recall looking at this map, what is FIDS? Is it zone green or red?
Green.
It is zone green. So, okay.
How much of Richfield Station was? Or it was?
I'd imagine. Well, before it was annexed and used growth allocation to develop. Yeah. I don't know. I know how much acreage of growth allocation was used, but I don't know how that matches up to the size of the development. But I would say substantial share, if not all of it. But it probably all the all of it that was within the critical area was probably was RCA. At the time it was first established, because it was nothing but a hilly woods wooded hillside.
So the total density of Richfield Station or anything that was developed in that. RPC. Would have been required to be one unit per twenty acres.
Yes. Right. Except that. They obtained growth allocation, which is an upzoning essentially, which enabled that to be developed where it is today. Which allowed it to be developed under the town's rules, whatever that zoning was. It happened to be RPC.
Did that happen again?
No, I don't think so. Not with the the comprehensive rezoning that planning commission did. No. Because the.
The town can rezone when it wants. The county town council can rezone.
Yes.
And if they rezone it.
That's the answer. That's the answer.
Do we have consensus then for the amendment to D one and to number four A? Which is basically the same wording. Do we have consensus on that? Does everybody have any questions or issues? Okay, so we have consensus on those two. What else did you want to make some changes on?
Page fifteen. We're still under the topic of density in the RCA. And we're under item B now. And B says one additional dwelling unit. In other words, an accessory dwelling unit as part of a primary dwelling unit may be permitted in the RCA. Provided the additional dwelling unit is served by the same sewage disposal system as the primary unit. This is one of those opt in provisions. If you allowed houses in the RCA, then it seems reasonable to allow an accessory apartment on the lot, a little granny flat in the backyard. But you don't allow residential uses here. So I just put it to you whether you want to eliminate this section. Since it's an opt in, you you can decide whether you want to keep this in. The state says it's up to you, town.
Well, isn't this and this really talking about? Whether the sewage disposal is into a septic system? I mean. Everything in Chesapeake Beach that's new goes into the sewage system, the same disposal system as the main house. So it's seems to me it's it's more talking about a septic system versus a city system versus other systems.
I thought it was it was disqualifying it about the sewage disposal system. It was basically saying you can do an accessory dwelling unit. But if you do, it has to be connected. To the septic or or to the public system, whatever sewage disposal system was there. As a matter of kind of policy, the town's plan doesn't allow the doesn't provide for the extension of sewer into RCA areas. Those are off limits to development. So. Would there be a septic system? Presumably. But. There's, I don't think there's going to be a house to begin with. No, maybe, maybe, maybe it's worth keeping. Well, maybe there might be a house at some point. Maybe someone says you can't extinguish.
Town policy to get rid of the septic systems.
Yes, it is.
My policy to get rid of.
Yeah. And the town agrees with that and.
So we wouldn't, I don't think we'd allow another house. Updick system.
Right.
Are you suggesting we eliminate it?
I'm suggesting, yeah, it's it doesn't. I don't see where it serves a purpose.
But what if the if we already have a dwelling in this area? And it's on septic and they want to add a secondary dwelling unit or a secondary. Then we can't eliminate it if indeed we allow them the the extra dwelling. It may already be on septic. It may already be a house there. Can we eliminate it if there's a potential for them to want to have a dwelling unit?
Yeah, you could eliminate that potential.
But we could eliminate the potential. Is that what we want to do?
That's the question.
I mean, do we want to do that? Is that because if, yeah.
I don't know that there are any houses in our RCA areas, but there may conceivably be at some point, even though the code says no residential development. If that ever went to court, I would imagine someone saying you've basically extinguished all right, at least get a ability to put one house. And I'll do it environmentally sensitive. I'll do it under the critical area laws. And if they did that. The question is. Do you want to allow an accessory apartment too?
So it seems like. Our theme has been to preserve the RCA areas. We would want to eliminate this. And put it back if for some reason we want it. I it's a little confusing to me because it says. Is it says it's talking about the dwelling unit and then it says is located within the primary dwelling unit. So that just I'm confused about this whole section.
More often than not, an accessory dwelling unit is inside the house itself. It's the basement, you know, basement, granny flat or up in the attic. And that obviously has no environmental impact because there's no more lot coverage being created. So that's why the preference is to first say there. But they're saying, or it's either in the building or it has to be really close to the building. Within a hundred feet of the, in other words, they don't want you to claw. Clear a big patch of ground to put another building somewhere far removed from the house.
So if we wanted to allow a dwelling unit that was in somebody's house, but not allow a separate structure, we would eliminate I. We wanted to. Only allow. One dwelling unit. Out a separate living quarters for somebody else, we would eliminate both of them. Am I understanding it right? I'm just confused.
You're not alone.
You have a house in the RCA. We have, we have the RCA, you would say is on Bayside Road. That's that's where our RCA, that's where we would be talking about here. It's in the RCA, but it's not resource conservation.
Right.
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 So in that area on Bayside Road, if we eliminate this paragraph. Or you recommend we consider whether or not we want to eliminate the entire section of B. That's what we're evaluating?
Yes.
Okay. And so. We're considering whether or not. For each dwelling unit in a place such as. Houses on Old Bayside Road. We want to eliminate the ability for those houses to. Gain one additional dwelling unit.
No, 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 sorry. Earlier you said Bayside Road, so I was.
Old Bayside.
Old Bayside Road, that's LDA down there.
Okay.
That's this, we're talking about the RCA zone.
Right.
So think about it this way. It's almost hypothetical, but if there were a house in the RCA. And think about this in the forested areas that are in a critical area and shown as RCA. The most prominent one is the Panhandle. In the event a house was allowed there. Would the planning commission be okay with allowing an accessory apartment there too? So that's the first question. Because Critical Area Commission, the state is okay with that because they want to allow accessory apartments everywhere. That's sort of the state policy. So this sort of matches up with that. So that's the first one. Do you, what do you, can I have a house that okay to have an accessory apartment? The finer point on it is you can say, yeah, you can have an accessory apartment. We're okay with another couple living there in that house. But you might say, we have reservations about allowing the additional building to be constructed on the lot. We want to minimize the impact of development to such a degree that we would only allow the house. Not. The little dacha out back.
Right, so we would eliminate just I in that case. Right. So we would eliminate just I in that case?
Or you say, is located within the primary dwelling, period. And eliminate the second part of I, or its entire perimeter is within 100 feet of the primary dwelling. You know what I mean? So you're basically saying, yeah, you can have a dwelling unit, but it has to be within the primary dwelling, if you were concerned about that.
Okay.
Does the current zoning code permit an additional dwelling unit in?
Yes, in certain zones, yes.
I'll let somebody else.
I just want to make sure I understand this. So let's say I have an unfinished basement. I'm in Richfield Station, have an unfinished basement, and I want to finish the basement.
Yes.
So a family member can move in. If we eliminate this, does that mean that I can't do that?
No, because you're not in the RCA zone. You're not in the environment, most environmentally sensitive part of the critical area.
Okay, so let's say I'm in the RCA, and I want to finish the basement for, for someone in the family to move in.
Right.
Because it's unfinished basement. And we remove this, then what?
You wouldn't be able to do that. You couldn't have another family living, a separate dwelling unit there.
Not like, not a dwelling, but their basement. If they have an unfinished basement and they want to, let's just say their child moved to college and it's moving back in, and they want to finish the basement for the child to move in there.
Would it have a kitchen?
Say yes.
Okay. Would it have a separate entrance? It can go in and out without going through the house?
Say yes.
And have a bedroom?
Yeah.
So it'd be a dwelling unit.
But it's still within the house.
That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you struck this, you wouldn't be able to do it. Keep it in and then you can do it.
But you said the zoning code would allow that. Would allow the additional apartment, our current zoning code would allow the additional apartment within the dwelling unit.
It does in a variety of zones, but we're talking about the critical area district now in the RCA. And within the RCA, which is really restrictive, it's saying, in the event the house is built, we think it'd be okay to have an accessory apartment. That's what the state model says. So in, in other words, we'd be okay to increase the intensity of use. Because, you know, having another family or having the college kid move back home doesn't really increase development impacts, except maybe there's another car driving down and forth. But it increased the intensity. There's another family potentially living in that same dwelling or on that same lot. And it's saying, we're okay with it, and we kind of want you to be okay with it too, but when the general assembly passed this, they said, make it opt-in. So if towns that don't want to do accessory apartments, they can say, forget it, state, we don't want
I thought you said, in the resource conservation area, aren't allowing residential
In the resource conservation zone, the town's RC zone, which really mirrors this. It's true. You can't do, that's right.
Oh.
I know, that's why I began by saying, it's almost hypothetical.
Right, I can't find any place.
Zoning code doesn't allow it. This would allow it. Zoning code overrides this because it's more restrictive, so why keep this?
What do you think? That's the question.
Where would this, this would be maybe on F Street? Over there on Elm Lane, like by Elm Lane? I'm trying to find a place where this applies.
Um, I'll tell you where it applies. Look at the northern part of town where, um, Elizabeth Court in the Highlands. You see on your zoning, on your critical area map, the word stenit?
Yes.
Is it written there in faint gray?
Right.
Okay, you see the green overlaps a couple of lots.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Their house is on those lots. So this is a prime example where houses exist today. Let's say a house wasn't built there. Oh, by the way, that area is not resource conservation under our zone.
Right, that's what I was looking for.
Low-density residential.
Right.
So here's an example where there's not perfect overlap. So say that lot is vacant, or becomes vacant at some point, someone wants to build a house on it. Is it okay that they can also have an accessory dwelling unit? That's the question. And by the way, if you walk two doors down, they can have an accessory dwelling unit.
Not in Chesapeake Beach, town.
No, because they're not in the critical area. Yeah.
So in the previous example, if you have a residence and you, you, you're not building a separate dwelling, you are, you just want, you want to finish the basement and you want to, you want to make it nice so it's, it's formally an apartment. It's got everything that, kitchen, blah, blah, blah. As long as you don't expand the footprint of the dwelling, is that acceptable?
It would be acceptable if you adopted this.
So I like your recommendation to strike the additional structure from I, the, everything after dwelling unit. What your recommendation, question might have been? At the one house, maybe it has a finished basement with a separate entrance, but we're not having two houses.
I think it's most consistent with the town's overall policy about not allowing development in RC, resource conservation areas generally. Which is a very clear statement of environmental land use policy. Allowing a separate dwelling unit in the most critical part of the critical area just seems like it departs a little bit from the more restrictive overall policy. So that's, I mean, so yeah, I think it's okay to allow another dwelling unit inside of a bigger house. I think it's, it's the way that this country has developed and it serves a lot of purposes, particularly in your kind of very suburban, low-density area like you'd find in RCA zone, you're not going to be impacting, plenty of places to park a car or whatever. But, so I would kind of advise, keep this in, opt-in in other words. But as you said, if you want to lower the impact of development, just say you can do it, but it has to be inside the building, the house. It can't be a separate construction on the site.
I would be.
So that's in compliance with Kelly's idea of the finishing the basement?
Yeah, that would be a finishing, or finish in the attic.
Right.
Yeah, or converting to den.
Grandma in the attic.
Right. Are you okay with that?
I mean, the only concern I have about it is that you are increasing the density of that area. And this is the most sensitive area that we have in the town, and we are intensifying it by more cars, and we don't know how many cars. I mean, it could be several cars. It would be, because just say a couple move downstairs. You're going to have two cars probably. So you're adding to the driveway size. Because you're not limiting driveway size, you're not limiting, you know, you're not changing that. So you're increasing the density of the most sensitive area in this town. And is that okay with everybody? I'm concerned about it because it just seems like we're contradicting what our future goals were. I would be wanting to opt out of this and not having any of this extra intensity in those areas.
I have a question.
That would be me, yes.
Say someone's selling their house in this area and they have unfinished basement. How would they find out prior to buying this house that when they buy this house, they can't finish the basement for the college student to move back in? How would they be notified thinking, okay, I'm going to buy this house in the Highlands. It's got unfinished basement. This is great. My child's coming, moving back in from college. Got a job in DC.
Oh, zoning. I mean, this is what zoning is all about.
Yeah, but are they, but where are we notified when they buy a house?
We don't notify people when they buy a house.
It's what real estate agents are supposed to find out, you know, these kind of zoning
But like, any, any home in Indianapolis.
Keep in mind, there's, there's only one house within 20 acres. That's what the first sentence in this says. In that 20-acre section of the resource conservation area, there's only one house. I don't think that applies to anything we're talking about.
Well, we have, you said we already have property in the, in that area, in the RCA.
Yeah, and that subdivision predates the critical area regulations. And that's, the RCA expands into that area because it probably houses weren't built there when that, the subdivision was planted. And it's right behind that huge marsh that floods out here.
Yeah, it's, it's, the problem
How many homes, how many homes are there now? Within the resource conservation?
I think those are two or, they're like just a couple, two or three, and it's marshy.
If there's more than one, then this is meaningless.
But that area is marshy, and I remember when we discussed that area, we were concerned because we know that that area is going to be underwater at some point in the next probably two decades. So why would we want to allow any more intense building in that area? We've talked about this before, and we all agreed, that should not be, you know, intensified at all.
So
That marshy area. If you know the area, I mean, those houses are
Right, and that's why it would be contained within the
But it's still increasing density. But Chris, back to Larry's point. If the zoning is more restrictive than this, or the, this is more restrictive, why are we modifying this when there's already a more restrictive standard?
Well.
I mean, why wouldn't we revert to the more restrictive standard?
Yeah, so let's unpack that. By and large, with few exceptions, the town's RC district, resource conservation district, is set right on top of the RCA district. So we have the most restrictive land use zone already, and it's almost perfectly aligned with the critical areas most of them. So, yeah, you can't build a new house. Okay, but you can build a house. I mean, you can have a house. So if the house exists already in the RCA zone, if you opt into this, the owner could build a little separate dwelling unit, or have another, you know, finish the basement.
There's all, that means if there's a house within at 20 acres, there would be two houses, you've already exceeded what this allows.
Well, I think there, you would say that that's a non-conforming situation. It was built legally at the time. So the, the owners are entitled to use the property under the laws that existed at the time. So the 20-unit density wouldn't apply.
My, my only concern is clutter. We're making, adding things that are confusing, they're overlapping. It's difficult for the common person to understand. It looks to me like this is something people will vent over for a day or two, and then they'll realize this really doesn't matter anyway, so they move on. That's my only concern.
Okay. So let's, let's deal with this B. And figure out how I want to do this. We can just leave it? There's just a few, a couple houses. Again, they're they're probably both on, actually, they're, they're probably not on septic. They're probably on, on the public, because they're right off, I think they are public.
Yeah, they may be.
I think they are.
That's something
Yeah, but if they're older, they're on
I can't picture the sewer map right now.
I think they were right in that little area, but anyway, it doesn't matter. The point is, how do we want to go with this? You want to just leave it? You want to just take out one or two, or I'm, I'm good to go anywhere you want to go. I'm just concerned that this is an extremely sensitive area. It's right there where all of the marshy, marshiest waterlogged areas are in the town, and yet we're going to allow them to put in, you know, more, another family.
Right, so to try and move this along, I'll make a motion to eliminate B, including subparagraph I and double I on page 15.
I will second that motion.
C and D also are attached to the same thing, right?
Yeah, because it refers back to the primary dwelling.
Where, I'm, I might be wrong about that.
I wouldn't think so, because
Well, it talks about the additional dwelling can't be subdivided or conveyed separately from the primary dwelling.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me, C and D aren't attached to B. They're separate. Oh, no, they're related, they're related, but
Unless there's no dwelling unit extra. I don't have a big problem with it. We have accessory dwelling units everywhere else.
But we're talking about the RCA. It's the most sensitive, environmentally sensitive area we have in the entire town. We're going to maintain any kind of sense of consistency with our comprehensive plan or with anything else. I think it only makes sense that we we continue with this motion and eliminate B. One and, or I and double I.
Why wouldn't we also eliminate C and D, though?
Well, because the motion wasn't amended to include C and D.
No, that one helps because it says you can't convey it separately. Subdivided, that one.
Yeah, but if there's nothing, if it's, if we don't have an additional dwelling, why would we refer to that? If we're taking out B, and then I and double I, C is referring to the additional dwelling and subdividing. But if we don't have it, what are we subdividing?
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Brown, would you like to amend your motion? Do you want to, how would you like to deal with this? Would you like to amend your motion to include C and D, because they do apparently relate to alter each other?
I have no preference, but you understand it better and feel strongly about it.
E is, is, is mud anyway. Branding of a variance unless the variance is granted provisions contained herein, I mean.
I, I
By varying.
All right, so I'll amend my motion to eliminate B, C, and D.
I'll second. Okay, we have a second. Any questions?
Well, I'm, I'm deferring to you guys. I can't even picture what this impacts.
B, C, and D. So the motion is to eliminate B, C, and D. We have no other questions. We have no other concerns about this. All in favor? I. Any opposed? Okay, we're just going to eliminate that whole mess. Okay, there you go. Five. And you know what? If we can, can we get through five? Because I want to probably stop in about five minutes and just have our commissioner comments unless you want to up now. Actually, let's go to part three. Could we get to part three?
Yeah, so we only, we only have page 16. Oh, you want to skip the next section, go right to part three, buffer?
No, I'm just saying, we want to go page 16. So what's on page 16 that you want to?
Yeah, 16 and the very top of 17. So this says the RCA uses, just like the other ones had a section on RCA uses. This says that existing, first one, existing industrial and commercial facilities that directly support ag or forestry or aquaculture or residential development not exceeding 1 per 20 shall be allowed in the RCA. So that basically, that's an example of that. Those two houses up on, three houses on Elizabeth Road that we just talked about, they can stay. They're permitted. That's what this says, right?
Well, they aren't industrial or commercial facilities, are they?
Well, it says all residential development. It has a whole list of uses. And then B says, um.
Well, they've already exceeded the 120-acre density.
Right, they're there. Right, they're there and they, so they are still permitted. Expansion of existing industrial facilities in uses in RCA shall be subject to non-conforming provisions and the grandfather provisions or may require growth allocation. That's all good stuff. We don't really have industrial facilities that exist, but I guess maybe could argue at some point we, actually, I don't know. I don't think we have an industrial facilities, but anyway, if we did, they could continue and under grandfathering provisions, which we'll get to eventually. And they may require growth allocation. So if you expand an industrial facility, you have to upzone the land. So I think this is fine to keep in, and this is not going to affect us, but it's critical area law. Now, C is where I'd like to suggest some changes. This is as a new, so we're talking about new develop, new commercial, industrial, institutional uses shall not be permitted in RCAs except, except as provided in the town's growth allocation provisions or is listed below. Let's set aside the growth allocation provisions for now and just say, let's look at the list below. In other words, it's saying you can't do anything, commercial, industrial, institutional, except for the uses that are listed here. You could do those. So you could do a home occupation as an accessory use on a residential property. You could do a golf course. You could do a cemetery. You could do a bed and breakfast.
There's no place for a golf course in Chesapeake Beach.
Yeah, so I would suggest this is an example where we can eliminate.
Of of all of those, uh, the only two I didn't line out were the home occupation and the bed and breakfast, but the others, a cemetery? I mean, how many cemeteries do we want? Gun clubs, daycare facilities, group homes, we've talked about that.
What is a home occupation?
Sixteen shoes.
Oh, a home, oh.
A lawyer can be a home.
CPA.
Hairdresser, got it.
Home occupation allowed in the MBA? Is it allowed in? So I would say that it would be unfair to say that if a house exists in the RCA that that person can't have a home occupation. I would not eliminate all of C, I would keep it and at least keep home occupation.
Yeah, I think Larry was making the same point, that that's one he wouldn't touch. Golf course, though, you, I don't know if you want to encourage the possibility of a golf course in the RCA.
Could it be a mini golf course? Could you allow recreational?
Would you do that?
I'm just, so.
The RCA, we just talked about the increase of.
Event, yeah, density.
Even homes.
There are examples in.
But I know that we were, I know that we were talking about the RCA down by Randall's Cliff, right, you know, that that area that we um, southern area down there. Would there be anything? No, I'm just, let me go back to to 5A. I know this sounds really silly, but would we need to put in a date as of an existing property or existing building as of a certain date? In case somebody decided to slip one in and then, oh, it's a building that, you know, but they decided to slip it in and not tell us until two years later? Would we need to have something that has the date in there after the word existing on 5A? An existing building as of, you know, existing as of, you know, March, you know, 2023 or something? I'm just, it seems like it would be too easy to just put one in there and if you're a commercial facility and you wanted to add something to.
Generally, um, when you adopt an ordinance and hold like this, existing means as of the.
As of that date?
Yeah.
Okay.
So does this, uh, does 5A mean that you can have one agriculture, one forestry, one aquaculture, one residential development in a 20 acre density?
No.
Does it mean only one of the above?
It says or resident, it says blah, 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 or. Which means you're going to have one or the other, right?
If any of those exist at the time you adopt the code, they can continue as permitted uses, whether it's industrial, commercial, or.
And do any of those exist?
We have some residential development.
The aquaculture in the RCA?
we have some aquaculture activities in the RCA. Uh, and what that is, is at the end of Bobby Adner's upland area where you can't go any further, he's got an aquaculture activity going there. Oyster cultivation. And you can go.
The next one would have to move 20 acres upstream.
No. I don't think that density applies to anything other than residential.
You're right next to it. Just said there can only be one per 20 acre density. That's what this said.
It's confusing.
Residential development.
It's written in a confusing manner. Yeah, I see. Or residential development not exceeding the one to 20. I, okay, so I see how there's, again, written poorly.
Are you suggesting we revise the wording? Are you making that point?
You should put, or or any, or you should say, or any residential development not exceeding the one. So if you're going to allow more aquaculture or any more forestry or agriculture, et cetera, you should add the word or any residential development not exceeding the one per 20 because it then separates that whole section from the previous part of this, you know, the prior part of the sentence.
The clarification.
This is, this is not well done, but it should be, or any resident, it should have the word any in there. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that works for me.
So let's include the word any, I guess. Or the clarification there. Okay, so, um, were we going to cross out or just leave C? Potential for a cemetery, who knows, I don't know, a gun club, I.
I'm fine removing a cemetery, I don't really want a cemetery.
Well, you know, there are, there are needs. And you could have a mausoleum, an indoor mausoleum, you could have some indoor, you could have an indoor gun club, you could do that.
We don't have any existing churches. And the cemetery would have to be accessory to an existing church, so.
So you want to eliminate some of this or just leave it?
No, I would suggest eliminating them, but again, if you don't, it's it's okay, this is the model ordinance, but if you eliminated it, it'd be fine. And if you eliminated golf course, I think it would be fine. It signaled that the town is not open to seeing its RCA developed as a golf course.
Okay, so eliminate.
Two, three.
So eliminate two, three.
Five, six, and seven.
What about four?
Um.
Breakfast facility? In the RCA?
Are there already bed and breakfast facilities in the RCA?
Aren't any in the RCA. I think we should eliminate, I think. Of course, the question is, can we keep a group home out of the RCA? That would be my question, but.
I would say yes, you can, and I I would suggest, in this case, you you do eliminate it.
Right.
I don't think we want to put vulnerable population in areas that prone to flooding or environmental policy. I would eliminate that.
So eliminate two through seven? Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Only keeping one?
Everybody said yes to one? Okay, who would like to make a motion?
Yeah, the other word I think bothers me is institutional. New, so we're saying new institutional uses shall not be permitted in RCAs. We talked when we were doing the comprehensive plan about allowing some kind of children's educational facility up along Fishing Creek. As the town would do that, that'd be an institutional activity. I don't, I think it's kind of dumb to have something in here that says, Town Council, you can't do this. They can do whatever they want. Oh, I would, I mean, they'll, they'll, that's just, I don't see it as a very useful function.
I would suggest that we add that. I had scribbled down as a, you know, a last item. I didn't know how this list would end up, but I, what Larry's saying is something I anticipated too, and I, so I put any institutional use, you know, in our land use, table of permitted uses, they're organized under categories of this institutional, recreational. Any institutional, recreational, educational use permitted by right or special exception in the RC district would be allowed. So, yeah, if you, uh, because again, our RCA was meant to overlap pretty much. Our RC district was meant to overlap the RCA district. So if you can do a.
Could you just say non-institu-, could you say not educational institution?
The 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 only reason I said is that because that's what the ordinance is organized by uses. You have a commercial, residential, commercial, institutional, recreational, educational is one category. And and we can go to our zoning ordinance and find what those uses are. You might remember there's five of them, I think, five or six were the only ones you're going to have in the RCA, and they're low impact and they're restricted. It can only be 2,000 square feet. Yep, all forest has to be preserved. So the same standards would accompany anything that happened to be in the RCA zone. Plus, the environmental standards for the critical area would apply too. But I would say that this is where we're adding something meaningful back to the critical area document. Otherwise, as a practical matter, we wouldn't even be able to do those things. And those are things you've identified as there being a public need for, or at least they would provide some type of public benefit. A playground for kids on the waterfront, a shoreline beach. I don't know what else we had.
I would say everything that's storage.
Oh, yeah, only the institutional and educational, recreational, not the industrial or not the, yeah, just those five.
Only the institu-, yeah, I'm, I would be amicable to that.
So I would suggest we add that, maybe that becomes number two and everything else goes away.
And we talked about having walking paths through the FIDS area and uh, that would be an institutional use that would not be permitted under, under that area.
Right, so Chris is suggesting that we add.
Just suggesting that the institutional part should be eliminated, commercial and industrial in it.
Both of those suggestions are good. So we could change it to read new commercial and industrial uses should not be permitted. So just eliminate the institutional, the word institutional. So new commercial and industrial uses. Do we need to even add educational? Do we want to add, do we want to include that or just not?
I would suggest adding it as the last item. But I guess I made that suggestion already. In this list of exceptions, oh, Larry's saying that you would just allow them. I would say qualify it to only those that are otherwise permitted in the RC district. That's why I suggest adding the exception clause. Like, all these uses are prohibited except for the institutional, recreational, educational uses that are permitted by special exception or by right or special exception in the RC district. So as long as they appear in the RC district in our table of permitted uses as being allowed, they are allowed in the RCA zone. Otherwise, you can't do a church, though. You can't do, and that's institutional use. You can't do a hospital, that's institutional use. You can only do those that are expressly allowed in the RC district.
You would leave the word institutional, qualify it in that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good, and you take a kind of a firm stance. Nothing's allowed except for these uses.
Larry, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so leave the new, so leave C as written, except for, and leave I, or one, we should say, I guess, one, a home occupation as an accessory use on a residential property. And as provided for in the municipality's zoning ordinance, okay? And then eliminate all the others. And then, uh, you want to add, you want to eliminate two through seven? But we don't want to add an eight, do we? Because then it looks like it's odd. So the the new number two would be this, right? The new number two, is that how we want to do that?
Yes.
I mean, I, I.
Two IIs or whatever you want to call it. Okay, so do you want to, how do you want that worded?
Any institutional, recreational, and educational use permitted by right, right or special exception in the RC district? And as an aside, I I'm looking, I don't have that list with me, but I just for, next time we get together, I'll have it. Or I'll send it to you so you can see.
Okay. Do we, does everybody have that down in their heads as to what you just, because I didn't get it all written down? Any institutional?
Institutional, recreational, or educational use. And each of those words would be capitalized because there is specific heading in the table of permitted uses. Any institutional, recreational, educational use permitted by right or special exception in the RC district.
Who would like to make a motion? That incorporates all of that? Who wants to do that? Who has the courage to do that?
Not me.
I was going to say, somebody have the courage to do that.
By right, I'll make it.
We're also, we're also voting on the footnotes, right?
No.
The elimination.
Footnote three is like 13, we could talk about the footnotes if we want, but I think they, they kind of go away.
I I don't understand the footnotes. And we eliminated 11, but 12 and 13s are attached to what we're.
Yeah, 13 just says that we can do what we're doing. The state says you can add additional uses that would be permitted. That's what there's, and we're going to send this to the critical area and they're going to say, okay, they all sound reasonable. They're going to ask what the conditions are that we've placed in our code. And I think they're going to say, smart, good.
Do we need to eliminate as provided in attachment A? We don't know what attachment A is.
No, number 12 goes away. I I don't think that's something that, this is just a note for the drafter.
Attachment A is is definitions, I guess, I don't know.
No, attachment A is the supplemental standards. So where there are certain uses that are allowed, like a golf course, for instance, if you go to attachment A, you'll see all the conditions for allowing golf courses in the RC district. Of course, that would all fall by the wayside if we remove golf courses.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwelder, go for it.
Make a motion. Remove under section C on page 16. Parenthesis numbers three through seven. And I would like to replace the text.
Two as well.
Parenthesis number two.
Two, three, seven.
Two through seven.
Well, I'm removing three through seven and I'm replacing parenthesis number two.
Okay, good.
With the phrase, and of course, I didn't write it down.
Any institutional, recreational, or educational use permitted by right? That's as far as I know.
In the RC.
In the RC district.
In the RC.
And it was by right or special exception.
By right or special, in the RC, there you go.
Sorry, Sharon, that wasn't very good. Any institutional use permitted by right or special exception in the RC district. Got it? Okay.
Does anybody need a re-reading of that or did you all get that? I think, uh, Commissioner Blackwelder did a great job on that. Did you want to hear what the motion was?
I heard it, I was commenting, did you intend to eliminate recreational, educational?
I did not intend that.
No, she said it originally, any institutional, recreational, educational use.
許配 by right.
許配 by right and special exception in the RC district.
Ethel, help me, and now you're helping.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Changes? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Okay, good, we're done there. Uh, can we conclude this on part three now and bring the rest of this up and, uh, and we, we've got still a lot to do for next, for next month, it looks like. Um, okay, uh, on the next item, I would like to continue with comments by commissioners. And I just want to clarify some of the rules on this. And the reason why I want us to have this, uh, part of the agenda is I want everybody to feel like they have the opportunity to speak on things that are not necessarily on the current agenda. Sometimes you may have an idea for a future agenda item. Um, please make sure that you keep it to something that's relevant to planning and zoning issues. Um, let's not go backwards and talk about things that were on previous agendas if possible. And the main, main, main thing I want to bring home is that we are going to be timed, uh, by Mrs. Hume, only one minute. And she will make sure that we stay as prepared and as succinct as possible in that one minute time. I will go ahead and start. Um, so go ahead and time me, Mrs. Hume. Bam. Um, this is just an observation I have, and that is that we have an increase of traffic along Route two sixty-one. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we're having a hard time getting out of Sixteenth and Seventeenth Street to get onto two sixty-one. It just seems like traffic, especially from the south coming north. But also, we've got a lot of traffic going, uh, north going south. But it just seems that we have, especially after COVID and people have gone back to work, we have just, we're waiting two and three deep now to get out of those, uh, out of those streets and actually turning into those streets. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up as an observation and there's my, probably my one minute. Okay, who else would like to have something they would like to, to bring forward to the commission? Yes? Commissioner Barault, please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted, I had sent everybody a sign, uh, that is now posted at, uh, Chesapeake Bayfront Park. And I just wanted to note, uh, three items. Um, the sign says Chesapeake Beach welcomes you, but then it says, stop, do not come in if you're not, if you don't live here. I think that's a conflict. I think we should take off the Chesapeake Beach welcomes you because, and just have Chesapeake Beach. Um, trespass is spelt wrong. I mean, if we're going to put a sign up, we should have the proper spelling. Uh, a lot of S is in trespass. Um, and lastly, uh, I don't know whether it's intended to be permanent, but when I walked down there this afternoon from this morning, it was face down because the wind. Um, so it also looks slipshod, that we're going to just pluck a sign in a cement bucket and, um, that's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, that's, that's really important. Thank you so much for that. Uh, anybody else that has a comment, um, for tonight's meeting? Anybody? Okay.
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Blackwelder.
So I just want to remind everybody that, um, while there's a lot of policies that are being talked about right now that are temporary and easily reversible, one thing that is not easily reversible is development. The responsibility to shape development policy is probably the most impactful task before elected leaders. And particularly in this case, because they've been serving during a comprehensive planning cycle. Um, I think it's important that they review the code that's in front of them. But in addition, there needs to be parallel efforts to get additional code items implemented beyond the thirteen priority amendments. Um, there needs to be, well, I hope that they review the queue, the code that's in their, in their queue. But there's other ways to get code into implementation fast, whether it's in the form of council-funded design standard studies, through efforts to fund master planning for particular areas, through a resolution to task our planner with additional code items such as the Development Rights and Responsibilities Ordinance, through additional town council work sessions-
That was one minute, I'm sorry.
Members submit codes.
I wasn't sure if that was a minute or what that was, but thank you, that was your one minute. I appreciate it. Um, okay, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
I had a comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um, yes, let me- I am so sorry, I did favor the side particularly tonight.
Look bright.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, I just wanted to commend our neighbor North Beach Planning and Zoning Commission for their work in, uh, making North Beach a welcoming place for visitors. Every day, hundreds of local residents enjoy the boardwalk where there is ample street parking adjacent to the boardwalk. The Sunshine Park that they have up there is a lovely place to visit, view local art and plants. And the Koi Pond, I see children there all the time enjoying that park. Uh, new restaurants and entertainment are springing up in North Beach. And finally, the new Calvert County Library looks like it's going to be an attractive loc, it's going to attract local residents and people from all over the county to enjoy the Chesapeake Bay from its balcony and large enclosed porch that they're planning. Uh, it too will have parking and in the building and on-street parking. Parking is a challenge in Chesapeake Beach.
Thank you, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. Uh, anything from Commissioner Han and Commissioner Rodkey? I didn't want to ignore you. Are you, have any comments or anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? I'm kidding. Yes, and Commissioner Barault. Madam Chair, can I, um, will you yield somebody's time to me for just a half a minute?
Okay, thirty seconds.
The only other thing I want to say is the walkability study, um, about, uh, I mean, we've had a recent, uh, almost fatality. And, uh, I, I think that we need to certainly look at that as far as in front of the school as it's being redeveloped and we have a new school, uh, crossing, uh, two sixty-one is just, it's very risky.
I know, I know Holly sent, but actually, there were two people struck. I don't, I didn't hear the first one, but, uh, Holly sent, uh, both of the police reports to State Highway. Never respond to her.
I mean, it's a roll of the dice crossing them.
Oh, it's-
Somebody could have got killed.
Do I have, um, thank you for bringing us these, all these important issues up. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn this meeting and call the meeting to closure. Thank you very much, everybody. Did you want to write them an email? Notice about this is-
I'm happy.
Would you mind sending? I, you know what? And thank heavens you are the editing committee.